Okay, so we continue our work session. The first thing, there were, there was a comment about to be made relative to our wrap-up of the educational planning discussion. Dr. Gabriel, you, did you lose it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're clear on what we're to anticipate on the 19th of March. And to Courtney's point, I think we should work very diligently toward creating a very clear project timeline in place that will benefit us all so that we're singing from the same proverbial sheet of music. Okay, and so we'll take care of the easiest item next, and that is the, yes, the seal, the high school diploma seal for the Leadership Center for Science and Engineering at Norview High School. This would be a new policy, JZZD, and we've been provided both the criteria and explanation of the policy. Staff is here to answer any questions regarding this policy, and if we're in agreement, it would simply be on the consent agenda on the 19th. Sam? Ron, you have a question?
This was what we directed Mr. Cloud to develop, and Mr. Cloud developed it, right?
I've worked with them. I really, they did most of the work.
And you say it's okay.
But I've reviewed it, yes.
Courtney?
So if I could, point of clarification, that the idea is that it's not just for the Norview High School specialty program, but for all five specialty high school programs have the opportunity to apply for a seal to be placed on their diploma.
Okay.
So it was a great idea on behalf of Norview, and we thought we should share and be equal opportunity for all.
Right.
And so that's what this policy reflects.
Any additional clarity or information on it, Dr. King?
Yes, I was just going to mention that, and this is, as you know, a follow-up to the original request that came, we presented it in December, and it was specifically Norview High School, and so we worked with Mrs. Doyle and Mr. Cloud, Mr. Coleman and Dr. Moore to come up with a specific criteria. And as you know, the requirement is just for local school boards to make the determination about how they would handle it, and so you shared that, "I'm developing the policy," which we did, so.
Okay, alright.
Are there any other high schools/programs that are looking to have a specialty seal?
We haven't received a specific request from another school to have one for their specific program, although, like you know, the IB program here at Granby has a particular seal. But they would, as a result of this policy, the five high schools and the current specialty programs in place would have the opportunity to submit one, and as you noticed in the policy, that there would be an application process and a review that would allow them to, the existing programs, to be moved forward, to be considered and approved. And if so, we would work with them to develop the seals and make sure that they met the requirements.
Okay. Any opposition to it? Okay, then it will be placed on the consent agenda on the 19th. Good work, Courtney, thank you for working along with administration in the separate. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item, 3.03, the Virginia Department of Education's School Improvement Academic Review. We did receive kind of a preliminary report on this a couple of months ago, and the final report and review has been already posted and presented to us for our review. We have about 40 minutes. I think it's important that we transition at 6:30, give us good transition time to prepare to begin on time at 7:00 PM. And so, let me recommend that by 6:15, 6:20, we turn our attention to agenda plans, just so we're clear on what's coming up on the agendas. Having said that, Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board, this gives us an opportunity to, again, outline the purpose of the academic reviews that we worked along with the state to implement, and the purpose around the review centered on determining challenges for school divisions and schools around accreditation, as well as to utilize that information from an analysis standpoint to develop essential actions in terms of mechanisms and structures and strategies that could support the system's improvement, as well as provide commendations around the current practices that might be in place. And so there, also, the process is reflective of a division-level emphasis as well as individual school-level emphasis. Involved in that, we, of course, have a team of cabinet members that were involved in the process. So this evening, tonight, Dr. Simmons, Dr. Seigney, Dr. Coleman, Dr. Charv Renee, Dr. Willis, Dr. Williford, and Dr. Birdsong were all involved in the process, among others, and we will move forward as appropriate. So, I'll defer to the team.
And we're going to do this as quickly as we can, because as you alluded to, Dr. Houston, the vast majority of this presentation you received in December with preliminary scores. The parts that are new tonight, or we've provided you with a copy of the actual rubric from the Virginia Department of Education, and we want to give you the opportunity to look at that. You have a hard copy of that in your notebook and ask any questions that you may have in regard to that. Then we also have many of our team members here, and we're all going to jump in and out as necessary, because it was very much a collaborative effort. And then we want to spend just a little bit of time at the end to share with you the essential actions and talk about what that means in regard to our work going forward. But we did very much consider this to be a partnership. We perceive the Virginia Department of Education and the Office of School Improvement to be our critical friend. They are here with us on quite a regular basis, providing external critical eyes, helping us as we move forward with our improvement journey. You know that this particular purpose was something that the Virginia Department of Education's Office of School Improvement provided for all school districts this school year with their schools that were not fully accredited, and we had 30 schools. So we conducted a district-level review, as well as a review for each of those schools, and then the results of that were to develop essential actions that would continue to guide our improvement. The rubrics that are, excuse me, the rubrics that were created were developed by the College of William and Mary, and they were very specific in regard to what they were looking for, and they focused on three primary areas of leadership, curriculum, and professional learning. The scoring was based on a scale of zero to three, with zero being no implementation and three being full implementation. And again, the rubric was very clear, you either met all the criteria in a specific category or you were bumped back down to the lower category. There was no particular wiggle room. We did want to give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you may have about the rubric. You were provided copies of the leadership rubric, the curriculum rubric, and the professional learning rubric from the district perspective, and those are posted for you, and you have hard copies in your notebook. I don't want to belabor the point, but I do want to give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you may have about the rubric. And that means we can go on, okay. With the leadership component, these are the things that we provided for the teams to review, and I'm going to ask any of our executive directors who want to jump in and share here, you're certainly welcome to do so, or even Dr. Birdsong if you'd like to share. Thank you.
I'd like to focus on the category Division Leadership, Basic Components, and give you an idea as to where we are today with completing the essential actions. The first essential action was to revise the Principal Evaluation Handbook to include expectations for the minimum number of required observations of probationary teachers conducted by building-level administrators. That action has been completed, it was completed in December, and basically, all we had to do was to insert a sentence in the Principal Evaluation Handbook that said, "See Teacher Evaluation Handbook, pages 11 through 13," because they were already clearly outlined. We have the standards for probationary teachers, as well as the standards for continuing contracted teachers. So all of those things were outlined, but we had to make a reference to the minimum number of observations required for building principals, so that, we were able to do that. And again, that was done in December. Also, Dr. King developed a locally-developed practices form, and within that form, he provides directives to executive directors about what his expectations are of them in terms of instructional leadership. And so they wanted us to go back and make a couple of revisions to that form as well. And so we did receive feedback back from the Department of Education, and they basically said that we have satisfied that, those two items at this point. That would be items number two and three, as it relates to the locally-developed practices form. And what we did is we went back in, and on that form, we basically annotated the specific number of site visits that the executive directors would be required to conduct at the schools that are not fully accredited. And Dr. King's expectation is that the executive directors conduct at least one site visit per school that's not fully accredited. And so that is now outlined within that locally-developed practices form. In addition, there was a concern about specific feedback to principals regarding their instructional feedback to teachers with formal observations. And so we went back and made sure that all of that was clearly delineated, so there was no wiggle room in terms of what his expectations are. He expects the executive directors to go in and to ensure that the building principals are providing feedback in all of the seven domains of the teacher performance evaluation system. In addition to that, the feedback should be specific regarding the areas of warning. For example, if the school was warned in mathematics and reading, then the feedback should definitely address those areas. In addition to that, a plan has to be developed for each school not fully accredited, and all of the areas of warning, there has to be a plan with specific dates outlined to complete the targets of that plan. And so, again, those two areas were completed and submitted to the state, so we are good to go with those three areas. And so the final thing that we have to do from a human resources perspective, and I'm sure the executive directors are going to address this, because they're going to be heavily involved with this, again, giving principals specific feedback, instructional feedback regarding their observations of teachers. And so from an HR perspective, we need to make sure that it's legal, what principals write is legal. So we've outlined the process for them already in our Teacher Performance Evaluation Handbook. Now, the executive directors will have to go back in, make sure that they're reviewing the observations and giving the principals feedback on what they're seeing in the classrooms. And if there's some trends, they need to address those trends. And so professional development should be ongoing for principals as it relates to instructional feedback. And that's all I have.
Want to add anything? Denise? No?
She's speaking.
Okay. Well, and I just want to remind the group that every place you see a one resulted in an essential action, which is why Dr. Birdsong shared that, and we have the essential actions embedded in this towards the end of the presentation for you. Questions? Okay. All right, and then with curriculum, all of our curriculum was reviewed in regard to these five domains. With the varied assessment category, that is not in reference to district-created benchmarks, that is in reference to the types of varied assessment that are embedded within the curriculum guides. So for instance, with the areas that are listed, the DOE has asked us to expand the types of assessment to include assessments that you might use to assess an English 9A standard, as to how you would assess that standard for a Tier One or a Tier Two or a Tier Three student, so that the types of varied assessments in regard to the needs of children are embedded within the curriculum guides. So we are working to expand those, those are works in progress, but they've asked us to do that for English and math, and that is a great idea, and we are working already with our curriculum specialists to make that happen. And then with science, the one there is represented from us needing to expand the real-world applications embedded within our science curriculum guides. So we have already begun that process and are working very intently, but we need to go back and add some more of those, and you'll see an essential action reference there as well. Dr. Corbin had a family emergency today and could not be with us, or she would be here sharing more information about these as well. Any questions about curriculum? Okay. And then with professional learning, we did receive many threes here. The PD plan, we only received a two in regard to the fact that the PD plan was not explicit in terms of the SOL weaknesses, so they have asked us to go back in, and this has already been done, to the district plan to say, based on an evaluation of third-grade math, we discovered a weakness in, and this is why we're offering this professional learning. Ours was pretty generic in terms of, based upon an analysis of SOL data, we've determined we did not link the explicit training back to the explicit standard in the narrative. So that has been cleaned up. And then that same category, that same criteria applied to how they scored the literacy plan and the numeracy plan. They wanted it broken down specific to each grade by each area of challenge embedded within each SOL. And you'll see essential actions for those that have already been addressed. Any questions?
I need to explain that.
Yes. That is in reference to, if you and I both walk into a classroom to observe someone teaching, how you score that person versus how I score that person. What we observe and how we both bring our own information to the table, making sure that we're scoring in a similar fashion, using a similar set of criteria. And we have begun trainings, Dr. Birdsong and the executive directors have begun trainings with administrators, looking at videos, scoring, sample lessons, and then having conversations about, well, I gave them this, and I gave them that, and going back and determining why.
Thank you.
The literacy plan, the numeracy plan that we received a while back, is that updated according to their recommendations, or is there another updated version?
Well, what we've done is we had to update them according to their recommendations and then embed them inside the curriculum guides. Part of what we got in trouble for was because, not trouble, part of what we earned a growth point for was the literacy plans and numeracy plans not being embedded within the curriculum guide. So we had it, but it was not embedded in one place. So we've taken all of those separate assessment guides and literacy guides, and they're now all embedded, excuse me, within this one location inside school net. So there's one language arts guide, and it has all of that in it. So would you-
Okay, so we don't really have-
It's not separate anymore, it's all in one location and one very massive comprehensive document.
Okay.
If you're going to address this in the later, in the actions, can you just say that? But there's a paragraph in here that references, says, "School Division has recently revised its curriculum guides. Administrators and teachers need sustained professional development related to unpacking the revised standards." It goes on to say, "This is a critical finding, because students must receive instruction based on the current standards in order to meet performance expectations and prerequisites for subsequent grade-level SOL." Can you speak to that?
Sure. That is referencing, and you've heard us spend an exorbitant amount of time over the last few months or past year or so discussing the need for enhanced and continued professional learning, and that is the new standards we're rolling out. In years past, there was not that mandatory training. So as teachers are encountering the new curricula now, because there was not training that was provided for them during the workday, they are now having to go back and learn kind of on the job, so to speak, because that training was not provided in another manner in regard to, and that's specifically referencing the essential skills. So the new curriculum is kind of broken down in terms of what they want students to be able to know and understand, it's called knowledge and understanding, but the columns are, it's a vertical document, and at the very end of that, there's a column that says "essential skills." And in that particular column, it's referencing the rigor by which students must demonstrate that they've mastered those particular standards. And part of what we're going back now and working very intently with teachers is making sure that the quality of the instruction has always been there. That's never been the question in regard to the quality of instruction, but it's making sure that the rigor of the classroom instruction matches how that standard will be assessed on the state assessment, making sure that there's a match. And that, that particular statement is referencing, making sure that the rigor by which students are taught in the classroom matches the rigor by the way, the rigor of which how that standard will be assessed. It's not referencing the quality of instruction, because we got quality, nobody's worried about the quality of what's happening. It's making sure that the rigor of what's happening matches the new rigor of the standards.
So from a timing perspective and where we are right now, so if they identified this in the whatever, I forgot the timeframe, October to January timeframe, and we have children who are preparing for the tests that are upcoming, what does that potentially mean for us? Are we, you know, what does that potentially mean for us? Are we going to be in a good place, or there's some concerns and some supports that we need to provide for you?
That's a very good question, and I want to remind us that part of what we were looking at with this particular district-level review was documents from the 12th, 13th school year and from the 13th, 14th school year first semester. And part of what we had requested as the division was that, when the state came in to do this review, that they only looked at things that had happened this school year. Because remember, we made monumental changes last year, so we knew coming in that there were some disconnects. So we asked them to only look at things from first semester, but they respectfully declined that request and looked at things from last year as well as first semester. So we believe that that particularly, the way they used the word "critical" was focusing on a lot of the documents that they did review from last year, there was some disconnect. But we've been training on this very thing now very intently for 18 months. And we have our teacher specialists and our curriculum specialists in buildings every day, pushing into professional learning communities, working with teachers on their planning periods and before school and after school to hit that very thing, making sure that there is a distinct connection between the essential skills and the rigor of the instruction. And I firmly believe that that's because that training was never provided for teachers prior to the rollout and implementation of the curriculum. So I feel much better. Would I, I would like to tell you that we've been able to, as I say as a former trainer, lay hands on every teacher multiple times, but because we have such limited windows where we can push in and work with teachers, not every teacher has had the extent of that training that we would like them to have, but we're still pushing forward every day, and we feel much better than we did this time last year in that regard.
So if the state didn't come back and say, "You're okay, or we're okay," is there some way that you can provide to us, you know, evidence?
Sure.
That we're okay?
Because the state is coming back. They're coming back and meeting with us on a monthly basis.
Right.
And our first deadline for the state in regard to all the essential actions that we'll be sharing in just a few minutes is at the end of April. So by the end of April, we have to provide tangible artifacts for the State Department to review, because they are monitoring our progress in regard to this as well. The commendations that we received are the same ones that we shared with you before, those did not change, although I'm sure you noticed when you read the report that they very much modeled the blow-and-grow perspective here. They did a commendation, but then there was a semicolon and some type of transition word and a comma where they went, "You did this great, but you could make it better," and we appreciated that. So we've pulled all of that out, and we'll be continuing forward. Our essential actions in regard to leadership, and most of these focus on a need for professional learning, and you've heard us talk about that again and again and again, around what is instructional supervision, providing explicit feedback, and Dr. Birdsong has already mentioned some of this, in regard to principals providing explicit feedback to teachers on their observations around the specific standards of learning that principals observe when they go into classrooms, as well as linking that to areas of academic warning, and then providing high-quality feedback that's linked to improving the quality of the instruction that's taking place in the classroom, and then being in those classrooms on a regular basis just to check on the things that we mentioned, making sure that that essential skill, that rigor piece, is what's taking place. And you can see down on the bottom where we went ahead and linked it to Strategy Three and the action plans that we already are rolling out in regard to training and how these essential actions just very much reinforce and validate that we were moving in the right direction with the professional learning that we already have in place. Anybody want to say anything? I feel like I'm doing all the talking. Okay, all right. With curriculum, again, more need for professional learning in regard to unpacking the standards, which is what we were talking about with the essential skills component, making sure that lesson plans are focusing on the current standards, making sure that the professional learning is in regard to the rigor, which are those essential skills that I was referencing a few minutes ago, and then making sure that teachers are distinguishing if a student is going to demonstrate mastery of a standard, how does that translate into student behavior? It's not, you just take the test, but what does that look like in terms of student behavior? Some folks call that learning targets, others call it, others call it learning objectives, but just making sure that that is clearly identified in the lesson planning component with the curriculum. Any questions here? Okay. And then with English, again, revising the, revising from a horizontal perspective, embedding those literacy and numeracy guides, making sure that our curriculum guides have more samples of rubrics. So if I'm giving a performance assessment and my students are comparing different Canterbury Tales, providing them with a rubric to assess those particular performance assessments, but providing more tools for teachers inside the curriculum guides is what that is referencing. And then they've asked us to expand the language in our lesson-planning template to include more very concentrated information on differentiated instruction. So we're working on that as well. Yes, ma'am?
If you could elaborate in this slide, and then I think the next slide is math. Right now, we have a, we have an English chair, we have a math chair, and then in the proposed professional development, items that you had given to us, we're looking at hiring a literacy coach and a numeracy coach. How would they function in collaboration with the, that chair at the administration level to impact the curriculum and then how it's delivered to the teachers, and then how that gets delivered to the literacy and math folks that we have in each of the buildings?
Great question. These specific individuals that we've requested permission to expand the professional, or create a professional learning department to, and the numeracy coaches and the literacy coaches that you referenced, would be working directly with teachers' training. So they would be more boots on the ground every day, pushing into buildings, working with teachers. The current teaching and learning staff for curriculum- The current teaching and learning staff or curriculum and instruction staff would remain the same. But they have to work hand in hand so that they are all aware and we're all training from the same perspective. We have a very strong collaborative component in the teaching and learning umbrella where everyone meets and discusses and shares quite regularly. So even though those new additions, if we're fortunate enough to get those fun, that funding, would be boots on the ground, providing training for teachers. They would be very aware of the curriculum pieces that are being updated by our content specialist. Because the math chair or math senior coordinator and language senior coordinator and the teacher specialist with them are very much content specialists. These new folks would be trainers.
So the senior coordinators would receive the curriculum from the VDOE. They would do the unpacking. And then the coaches, the boots-on-the-ground folks would be helping the teachers with the unpacking of the curriculum.
And that would apply for the numeracy positions as well, the same thing. Any questions about English? I'm trying to hurry. Math, again, some very specific revisions in regard to the curriculum guides. Wanted to see more opportunities for math for more informal assessment and providing samples of informal assessments within the curriculum guide. Also making sure that those assessment strategies, again, are linked to tiers of students and providing additional scoring guides and rubrics within the curriculum framework. So providing more tools for teachers and taking what we have and expanding it.
Can you go back to math for a second? So math is a big deal for us. And can you give me a little bit more about what we're doing to, I guess, address some of the issues that, that have been raised around math?
Well, we're, we're pushing into all of our schools, working with all of our teachers who are teaching math to, to work with them to make sure that they're honing in on those essential skills. When we had the new assessment rollout and we saw the dip in math scores, we need to remember that there had not been the prerequisite training for teachers. So they were teaching a curriculum and students were testing on a curriculum, and the teachers had not been provided that training prior to the curriculum rolling out or the students taking the assessment. So there was a dip in the score. So that's, that's what we've been spending an exorbitant amount of time and energy on, is doing what I call backfill and going back in and working with teachers to provide them with training that they, in all honesty, should have had two or three years ago.
If I may, I'd like to also add that from a leadership perspective, going back to the concept of providing explicit feedback, our principals are, especially in the Warren Schools for math, are honing in on, on math in terms of their observations and providing explicit feedback in that area. And we know that explicit feedback, giving that feedback in terms of the content, which is math in a cognitive level, which aligns to that instructional piece and looking for the, for the rigor in, in the instruction will help improve achievement. So just aligning all of those processes together in terms of providing explicit feedback, which you know Dr. Birdsong and Dr. Savitny has hit on previously, is going to help with that essential action and also ultimately get us where we aim to be in terms of, of math.
But I guess in terms of catching up and then leapfrogging ahead, are we, you know, are we, are we behind? Are we catching up? Are we ahead of the game now? Because it just, it was reading through all the individual school reports and reading at the district's support level, it seemed like that explicit feedback was something that was constantly mentioned all the way throughout the, the system. And so I guess I'm trying to get a sense of where are we right now? I understand what may have happened in the past, but where are we right now in terms of providing these supports that I guess need to occur in order for us to have the success that we want to have?
Based on the volume of training that we're doing, the, the level of reception from the teachers who are participating in the training and what we're seeing when we're doing our walkthroughs and our focus walks and looking at our common formative assessment data, we do believe that we are moving in an upward pattern, that we are working to catch up. So we feel confident with that.
Okay.
This is the essential part of professional development right now for our system?
Most definitely. Most definitely.
Well, this is, this is what we're talking about, when we say professional development.
Yes. We're still playing, and I hate to say it that way, and I'm sure there's a much more professional way to say it, but in all honesty, we're still playing catch-up. The things that we're doing today should have been done three years ago. And that's, that's not an excuse. That's just the reality, and we're out doing it every day, working with our teachers.
So in the past, professional development would have been what? If they weren't doing this?
Well, it was not mandatory. It was optional, and teachers could attend or not. Yes, sir.
Yes, I agree. And in addition, that is, that is an example of why ongoing internalization of what a safety net rollout really means is even more important for our division than it would be for other divisions. It's, it's important, period, for any division. But because of the fact that we have children that, that bring varied gaps, after the elements of the standard are rolled out over a period of time and you determine that there are deficiencies, it is extremely important that we are providing those opportunities across all of our schools for, for the reteaching of the concept that was not mastered, or the double dip, or whatever the push-in or pull-out model, whatever the model that the school is utilizing in its own site-based plan to do so, that, that is of paramount importance because that's going to determine mastery. And that's why you hear us talk extensively about monthly common formative assessments and why those things are important for us and why we continue to have to hammer those home in terms of getting better with how we measure learning because that's the only way you're going to chart whether children are getting better with, with mastery of those standards. So in addition to that, that's important. And professional learning around how to do that in a, at a high level is also important for us.
I might add just one more thing. Dr. King is talking about safety nets. One thing that we are doing this year that's never been done, we have a vast number of tutors and retired teachers that are giving the safety nets to children. And so those individuals are now being trained as well. And their training correlates exactly with what the teachers are getting. They work with the teacher groups, the teacher grade level groups, to make certain that they are implementing the same standards as the teachers are. That's something very, very different.
This is just a long, that same ones. Are we keeping track of the number of hours the tutor is spending with the child? And then this amount of hours has resulted in X amount of performance increase, and the teacher is noting that in her, okay. And these are paid tutors? I know you said we had volunteers, but we have-
No, these are paid tutors.
Paid, okay, paid tutors.
They're with safety net funds that you all-
Funds, okay.
All of the, for safety nets and SOO radiation programs, you know, or strategies that are defined, we are tracking so that we know which ones are effective and which ones are less effective so that we can streamline, you know, as we, we move down this road.
Because we have $500,000 allotted for that. And if that $500,000 needs to be expanded or if you're seeing big gains in that area versus, you know, other areas, then that is very important for us to get back and for us to incorporate in this budget or next budget or for future planning.
$700,000.
Seven hundred.
And so that's where the, that's, that's the budget implications of professional development lies there. And the personnel of tutors and, and what other way would we see that budget being impacting what you're talking about here?
The $719,000 that we've requested for next year is for personnel, the addition of personnel, as well as very specific training based on identified needs. And it's kind of broken down over the next five years as to how we would roll that out. But it is very specific to needs that we've identified after analyzing our data. So we will be able to link all of that back to teacher performance as well as student achievement. And you'll see there's an essential action about that in just a second.
Is that a good question?
It was a great question. Sorry, I didn't, I dropped my teacher hat for just a second.
You needed that positive feedback for your question.
With science, again, revising to include more explicit scoring guides and rubrics, more real-world learning experiences, connecting those learning experiences with the tiers of students. For science, they very specifically ask us to include language so that if I am a student with disabilities, these are what, a disability, this is how you might assess. If I, if English is not my first language, then this is a way that you might assess. They've asked us to, to break it down a little bit more. And then they also ask us to conduct an inventory of all of our current science materials because we couldn't seem to provide a district-level inventory. So we are already working on that as well.
I'd like to add to that. And in reference to revise the current specific learning experiences and make them more like real-world applications, we took eight, seven principals and about thirty teachers to New York to West Point. And they walked away with a clear understanding of how to go back into the classroom the next day, build computers, micro robotics simulations, bridge simulations, and test science applications in the classroom. And they gave them the software and everything. So that, I think, really complements what teachers can do different with regard to project-based learning.
And that training can identify identified needs. With history, again revising. We knew that K1 was an area that we had not quite gotten to. Remember, we added a kindergarten coordinator this year and two teacher specialists for kindergarten, and they simply had not made it through the history curriculum yet. So this is almost finished as we speak. They also ask us to put some procedures in place, written procedures, in regard to making sure that the taught curriculum in regard to the lesson plan expectations and that written feedback is there and that the tested curriculum, which is the analysis of teacher-made assessments, includes some very specific things. They want to see inferences as to why students may have scored something or identified something as correct or incorrect. They want to see student-specific data. So they want to see teachers taking their tests and pulling them apart in terms of, these are my high students, my low students, my bubble students. They want to see written inferences in teacher records as to why teachers believe students would score in each of those categories. They want to see the use of teacher assessment to drive future instruction, which is the cycle for results. And then they also want to see those scoring guides so that we can work to improve the inner rate of reliability that Dr. Houston asked about earlier. And then with professional learning, again, providing additional training in regard to tiered interventions for administrators and teachers. And I'm happy to share that the DOE is providing a trainer for us at, at no cost to us in regard to some of these. And he's already given us a list of dates for us to select from. Working with our lead turnaround partners, which our executive directors work very closely with all of the lead turnaround partners in regard to professional learning. They recommended that it's time for us to conduct a formal review of the memorandum of agreement that we have with our teacher associations in regard to professional learning. They want us to expand the literacy and numeracy plans in regard to the areas of weakness, and that has already been taken care of. The feedback training and the lesson planning training that we've already mentioned, the unpacking the standards training that we've already mentioned, having a very focused, data-driven, data-driven decision-making training so that everyone understands that cycle for results on a very intimate level. And then capturing the impact of teacher learning on student growth. That, that happens all around the nation on quite a regular basis, but it's not a practice that has been applied here in Norfolk yet. So we will be bringing that here as well.
Couple of questions on that. So just for clarity, is the professional development training that you all are mentioning now, is it still optional or is it mandatory?
When we're pushing into the buildings during the workday, that's not an option.
Not an option for the-
Teachers.
For the teachers. So what, what's the piece that is an option?
Attending after-school trainings or Saturday trainings or participating in longitudinal or long programs for which we are not providing tuition or stipends.
So just in terms of capacity to, I guess, demand, it just seems like it's a lot of schools and a lot of teachers and a little bit of you all. So, I mean, how often, I guess I'm asking my question, I always ask, do you need something from us to help support the ratio of the professional, professional development need compared with how many people you have trying to push in to provide it?
Well, we did this year take all of the teaching and learning staff and redistribute their duties so that everyone who works on the eighth or tenth or eleventh floor in regard to teaching and learning is in the bill, they're in buildings, in school buildings more than they're downtown. Everyone is out doing training. We, we desperately need the additional staff members that we've asked for next year. We desperately need the additional funding that we've asked for next year. Quite frankly, I'll just cry if we don't get that. We've kind of hit capacity with what we can do internally. You know, everyone is out working with teachers on a regular basis. And our executive directors are out working with leaders every single day. So we're all out doing all that we can.
Along that line as well, the Calida Committee is now entering into discussion around, you know, what are the opportunities that are out there that we can hone in on to secure additional professional learning days for the whole notion of creating highly, more highly effective teachers and the notion of building additional support for principals, principals to become highly effective in instructional leadership. And so that discussion is ongoing with a cross-section of stakeholders reflective of our teacher organizations and other representatives of our staff to take a look at how we may be able to agree upon securing X number of days to devote to doing that. And so we look forward to, to the outcome of that as well.
All right, so what's next? The essential actions, all the ones that we've mentioned will now become part of the district End to Star Plan. So we are in the process of doing, assigning all of those. The, the persons to whom you see referenced there may or may not be the final persons that the DOE provided in writing, the persons to whom they thought should be responsible for those particular essential actions, but those persons have not been verified by the district as being the ones we will hold responsible for those actions. But we're in the process of, of doing that now. Many of the essential actions have already been completed. And then the schools are taking their essential actions and working them into their End to Star Plans. And our first progress check with the VDOE is April 30th in regard to the first phase of essential actions. And again, that will be a, a review of tangible artifacts. So again, what have we learned? That we're working in the right direction. We got a long way to go, but the areas that we had, had identified were on target. And that working together, and the DOE is a very strong advocate for us and a very strong partner for us, that we're, we're moving forward. We got a long way to go, but we're definitely moving forward.
Something to consider for the budget. We know that Dr. Stewart had asked what it would cost to add for five or a couple of additional days to teacher contracts. We might want to take a look at that again, because those additional days might be days that we could incorporate professional development.
That was my first comment, but to piggyback on that. I've been working on, after reading the school-based reports, some recommendations for the board to consider around amping up the supports for professional development, and some other areas. You know, right now it's in the additional funding priority. One of the recommendations I have is to move it into the base budget. But my, I guess my general question is, as I was reading through the district review and the school review, it's a lot there for principals and teachers. So in your discussions with VDOE, in light of some of the things that you all have uncovered, what impact is this having on the evaluation of teachers and principals now under the new standard? So on the one hand, the reviews seem to suggest that there's a greater need for support from the central administration to the principal and to the teachers. At the same time, the teachers and the principals are being held accountable to success as it exists today. Has there been any conversation around flexibility with that, or how does that work? Or how will that work?
And Dr. Bertscham may have some additional comments in that regard. But as it relates to teachers, it goes back to the linkage to the particular indicator that centers on the effect that the teacher is having on student outcomes, student achievement outcomes. So there is a greater focus on that, and quite frankly, there's a requirement to have a greater focus on that. That is not the only indicator, but it's a clear indicator around which teacher evaluation is required to reflect that. And that's the whole piece that you heard around clear commentary related to the evaluation tied to the standard. You heard us talk a lot about disaggregating the data from the system-level standpoint. Well, it gets down to what we mentioned in the cycle for results in the classroom around honing in on what those deficiencies were, when they didn't master standards. Did we go back and do the reteaching necessary? And then evidence that they did master out, and then it's pinpointing that evaluation that that is being done effectively. So that's a growth piece, too, and it is a piece that has implications for ongoing professional development and learning. At the same time, the same concept applies to instructional leadership for the building-level leader, and indicators that center on determining where the school is from a baseline standpoint, and what are the SMART goals for moving forward, linked to student achievement as well. So that's another indicator where there's a clear linkage to all of those things. And I think that we have to model that at the central level with the things that we are having discussion around now, with quantifying each piece linked to the strategic plan and results. So it's a pretty seamless process, but it's, it has to become the culture of the organization, and it reflects a paradigm shift in doing the work as well. So I hope I'm touching on your question at the top.
I guess I was trying to figure out is there flexibility? So if the principal, if the principal is supporting the teacher, and the teacher's in the classroom, and they're teaching the assessments and delivering the lesson plans that they have, and we're doing the common formative assessments and benchmark tests, and they're seeing growth based upon what they were provided and what they taught and what the student demonstrated that they mastered, do they get rewarded for that even if it is not aligned with what may occur when the student takes the standard because of any gaps that may have existed between the curriculum as it exists today and the rigor and all of that that we talked about earlier?
My answer to that is that they should, because goals should be set based on that type of thinking in terms of where children are and where they need to go, and how we're making progress from what I describe as the baseline forward. So even if it's short of what the ultimate absolute is, you receive credit for reaching those incremental goals. But the professional learning piece is around being able to create those goals that are meaningful and have them in the evaluation. Dr. Bertscham?
Mr. Jordan is absolutely right. The whole, the teacher performance evaluation system is based upon student growth. And if we're looking at just standard seven, 40% of the overall evaluation is standard seven, which is student outcomes. Now, we break that down even further. We have student growth percentiles, which are SGP's, which can account for 20% of the overall evaluation. Another 10% could be the goals that the principals set with their teachers, and then another 10% would be other measures, which you would look at your common formative assessments and things of that nature. Now, the Department of Teaching and Learning, they are responsible for pushing out what growth looks like, what's an acceptable level of growth. And based on this document, teachers and principals will know exactly where their children are and where they will fall. So most teachers will not have SGP's. Most of the evaluation will center around student outcomes or other measures and the goals that are set by principals and teachers. Only the math and the reading teachers will have SGP's, and not all of them. And so you're going to be looking heavily at the goals that the teachers set with their building principals. And so there are a lot of layers to that, meaning teachers must receive specific feedback about how they're doing with their children. So that feedback has to include data. How are you doing with your common formative assessments and any other type of assessment you may be looking at to measure growth? So that's really important. So as the teachers are receiving that feedback from their principals, the principals also need the feedback from their executive directors about what they're doing. What are the patterns in the building? What are the trends? Are you looking at your data? What does that look like? What are the areas for improvement? What are the commendations? So it's a layered process, and that's why they've kind of pinpointed some of those patterns that they've seen. So feedback is an area that we certainly need to work on.
Dr. Bertscham, would you explain to Dr. Houston what STPs are?
SGP's, I'm glad Dennis is buddy, is he still here? It's a very technical term, it's student growth percentiles, and they look at a group of students?
I'm not sure why you made that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay.
But that's it, Matt.
Okay.
It is, I look at that. Yeah, the question is six, 26, so we definitely need to move toward closure on this, but.
Just a real quick comment. My recollection on the teacher evaluation, that student growth process was not to punish the teacher, but to identify the teachers that need help and then give them the proper training for that. Just keep that in mind.
Okay. Dr. Savigny, thank you very much. I think this review from the Department of Education has been very helpful to us. Didn't have the opportunity to travel up into the administration for the presentation from the Office of Strategic Improvement. And the tone was very positive in terms of their commitment to continue to provide us support. And so it's not just about accountability, that's a big part of it, but it's also about support. Dr. Savigny mentioned that they're very much partnering with us in this process, and I think that's evident in what we've received tonight and will continue to be evident as we continue to work along with them. So thank you and your team for the work that you are doing in helping us catch up, so to speak. Okay? We have just one last order of business, and that is the review of agenda plans for the upcoming weeks. So our next meeting is March 12th, which is next Wednesday, which is totally dedicated to the budget, March 12th. And so that's from 12 noon until four, we'll be at Central Administration Building for that meeting. The following Wednesday, the 19th, oh, I'm sorry, that same night is the?
Regional meeting.
Regional meeting, yes, and that's in Williamsburg. So I'm not sure how many of us are planning to attend that.
I hope everyone.
Well, this month has really, really kind of taken off all of the Wednesdays, which is an important workday for me in my chosen profession. Yes, that's the same night. It starts at 5:30. And so we will have a helicopter.
Aren't we going to row the boat across?
Yeah, we'll have the nightingale. That'll get us over there. Yes. Yes.
Well, I may leave early, because I need to be there.
Reverend Haywood's on the non-dicking committee, so he probably needs to be there, so.
Okay, so we need to get our work done.
Five thirty.
Starts at 5:30. Probably not. And then on the 19th is our regular monthly meeting. We are adding, of course, an open and formal session for budget discussion, as well as now we've included 30, 40, 5 minutes for the updated information on the educational planning study that we received and proposals. That's on the 19th. 26 is a placeholder. If we don't finish the budget on the 19th, then we have the 26 as a placeholder for finish that business, and that will be our deadline, actually, to get it done. Janelle did provide for us a calendar for the next 30 days, and student support tomorrow.
It's canceled.
It is?
No, we don't have any cases.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Wow, in the middle of school.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's great. Okay.
If the D E decides to have a meeting on the 26th, I know that there's a governor's school meeting on that day, as well as a, is it CAC? CAC meeting at that time also. CSEP meeting, CSEP meeting. And then on the 19th, there's a 1 o'clock hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
I will not be able to be there for the 1 o'clock hearing, but I can be here at 2:00.
Okay.
So.
Okay. And I hope we'll really work hard to complete the budget on the 19th if at all possible. It has to be our aim, and remember, I do depart on the 26th.
March 10th is PTA reflection.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that.
Now. Now, is that for the board?
I think we were all invited.
Okay. What are the time, what are the time on that? I did see it.
5:30 is the social hour, 6:00 it starts.
5:30 is the social hour, 6 o'clock the program starts.
And every board member will rise on stage to shake hands with the students.
Question?
Yes.
Okay.
Rosemont?
No, it's Rosemont.
Okay, any questions on the upcoming? We do have agenda planning next Thursday. Any questions or comments?
Answer on this, but to Dr. King. Generally, by this time, calendars would have been approved. This is just not the year to talk about calendars.
I'm glad you mentioned it, because it was on my list here, and I was going to ask Dr. Simmons. I know she's been working.
But I, the only reason I mention it, and I would well understand deferring judgment because based on so many different things.
Sure.
But it's just an item that we need to be important to deal with.
Yeah, we definitely should be considering it in April, certainly no later than May. How close are we?
We have a meeting scheduled during the snow, and it's been rescheduled, and we intend to act very quickly on determining which days are going to be our makeup days and the snow days, and concluding the calendar.
So do anticipate April presenting it to the board, or?
Hopefully, we'll have it done by Friday of next week. I'm not sure which day, but we have a day in the calendar to me.
Yeah, present in April.
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then we also will get an update on transformation plans in April as well. All right? That ends our business for the work session, and we have no transition time. We want to try to begin the public hearing as soon as possible, it's 6:33. All right, thank you.